Care. Yes, I'm just saying. I mean, listed as a tattletale. I've been too busy to see more calling in.
I just wanted to call you out publicly. It's okay.
Okay. I wanted to deny something that I really don't even know too much about when I'm denying.
Can you hear us now, Justin?
I could be mistaken. Let's go with that.
We call those events as you've described. I think it's them.
I really don't. Most of the time people say that, they're like, oh, yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about, but not gonna say anything. No, I really don't. Holy.
Got notice that the.
Talk later.
Okay, we gotta go. We're ready.
Up and down.
There we go. Thank you. Welcome to the November 1st City Council meeting. Would you please stand and join me with the pledge of allegiance? Thank you.
And we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty.
I'm gonna take roll call.
Please, we can have the roll call now.
Councilmember Bellinger.
Present.
Councilmember Crummick.
Here.
Councilmember Swift.
Here.
Mayor Pro Jim Tim Legero.
Here.
And Marrow.
Here.
All right. Let's see here. We're gonna start off. We have no presentations. We're gonna start with the consent calendar looks like.
Mr. Mayor, on the consent calendar, I'm gonna be abstaining from item number four.
Okay, very good. We'll note that. Oh, yeah, I see why. Okay, good enough.
And also, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, on item number two, I will be abstaining from voting on check number 9819.
Okay. Just a moment here. Consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and act upon by a single action unless requested by an individual, council member, or member of the public for special consideration. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Was opposed? Okay, motion carries. Was it four?
Five.
Yeah, four.
Four, because we have an abstain. Oh, he just, he can still vote with it?
Yeah.
I get it. Okay, so it's five of them. Very good. All right, let's see what's next here on the agenda. Staff communications.
Do you have anything? Let Chief go first.
Whoever you want is fine with me. Council, we've had a rash of catalytic converter thefts, as well as.
It's up again.
Two different counties on either side of us. Sheriff's counsel advised that a large player was tracked to Long Beach and subsequently arrested. Apparently, he was trafficking them to Long Beach to ship them to India to get the platinum out of them. Interesting. We're going, Sergeant Flores has set up an event with Les Schwab. It'll be put out through Escalon Times, Facebook, Cities Facebook, as well as the PD's to engrave the catalytic converters, because once they are serialized, it now becomes a felony to steal them, as it is. It's just a misdemeanor. You can push grand theft because of the cost of the replacement, but serialized as it belongs to the car. Now, the district attorney is on board with this, because with what we serialize them with will relate to the specific vehicle they were on. If they're in possession of it and do not own that vehicle or have any rights to that vehicle, she will move forward with pressing charges against them at a felony level, which will hold them in jail longer. More time to prosecute.
Weekend.
So, to get them engraved, Les Schwab will be where we're doing it. We're gonna have one hopefully the week of the 20th this month. Another one in December, and I'm pushing for a third in January. We'll probably go up to March or April, just to offer it to get everybody through there. I have two questions. First question is, how do you, what number goes on the catalytic converter? Is it the identification, identification number of the vehicle itself? We could do that or the license plate number. One of the two. Either one. Okay, so now the guy steals it and they catch him with it, but somehow there's no number on it, because he ground it off. Well, the ground, the ground off part will be the hard part to grind, to grind off to where they serialize them. It's hard to get to unless you're tearing it apart. Okay, just curious how that all works. What's the time for a felony versus the bad on the hand? Probation or jail time. Is that the felony options? Well, yeah, it gives, it gives your district attorneys more leverage, more option, because misdemeanors can be diverted to other programs, like probation, house arrest. But a felony cannot? It sticks harder. Let's just put it that way. Is there a financial penalty for it as well? Of course. Perfect. Okay. Any more questions for the chief gentleman?
I had a question. Are the majority of the thefts, are they from like, commercial businesses, or are they from residential?
Residential.
Just going up to people's?
Well, I'll, there's another agency currently looking at the five that we've had, that I've recorded so far. There's probably eight total for this month. There's another agency looking at a specific vehicle with a tracker on it that puts it at those locations. So I'm working with two counties and one PD. Let's just put it that way. I don't wanna, I don't wanna publicly come out and ruin anything, because they haven't quite stopped them yet. But there's several people involved in this, multiple crews. And they've, they've since been targeting the cars. They've found a fair number of them, and they're all running around with trackers on them. What is the type of vehicle most desirable for this? Right now, it seems to be Toyota. It goes back and forth. Chevy's been targeted, Honda's been targeted, Volkswagen's been targeted, BMWs, anything that's loaded to the ground and not up in the engine bay. Volkswagen's been targeted. There you go. Interesting.
Is there things people can do to secure those? I know there's, I think there's things you can put right on your car that'll make it so they can't just rip it off?
They're expensive. You're talking to cages that go around them, that the mechanics have to install them. They're usually fabbed up as they go, because there's no specific thing to lock it down the way, I mean, there's aftermarket stuff, but some of the tougher things to cut through have to be welded together.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
So they're actually cutting these up with a saw? They unbolt one in and then cut the tailpipe off. You couldn't hear that so loud. You would think. Yeah.
So, Les Schwab's gonna help us out with that, a no-cost situation for the community? Is there a charge for this? Okay.
We didn't, there was no cost last time. If not, I'll figure out how to.
How, what kind of timeframe does it take? Just, it might be in the article, but what does it take, that 15, 20 minutes? Put it on lift, slap it out there?
That or less.
Kind of thing, quick in and out, forum?
Yep. Are there any other questions for the chief from anyone else?
I like it.
Doesn't sound like it. Okay, so what's next?
Do you have anything, Claire?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
I'm gonna have Justin give me a call, so I'll provide my update right now regarding temporary structures, which was the item that came before the council and is going through its process to Planning Commission. It will be going to the Planning Commission this month, November, which is the meeting of November 12th. And then it will come with recommendations to the council, and we're going to push to try our best to get that on the next meeting. If not, it would come in December. May, may go into January, but we are moving it forward. A reminder for the next meeting, which is also the November 15th meeting, we have the Proposition 218 notice scheduled for that meeting, so the Jilton items will be on that meeting. Regarding the city's properties, we're currently working on some numbers with the alfalfa, and so I don't have anything, any updates on that as of now, but we are working on getting something together, so I should have enough information for the next meeting.
I have contacted a gentleman who was interested in removing the trees for us.
Yes.
And he's supposed to have sent me a proposal, which I don't think I've received yet.
Yes.
But I will bring it to the council to review. And the proposal he made was, he would do it for like $400 an acre with a agreement that we would allow him to advertise on our billboard out there for a certain amount of period of time, which would be negotiable with the council. But I thought it was a pretty good deal, considering what the road cost is for all these things. So, he's, he's looked at both parcels, and he's gonna come up with a proposal for us. So that would make a big difference if we get those out of there. And then we, well, then you're gonna have to rip it and a bunch of other stuff, but there's, that's a start. And then relatively inexpensive compared to the current market value.
Yeah.
His name, by the way, you wanna shut this down, was Mike Spanza. And I'm gonna give you his phone number to talk to him if you like.
Okay, yes.
Uh, 629.
You can give that to me later.
Okay. Anyone whole town to know about it? Why not? Okay, remind me after me and I'll give it to you.
Sounds good.
All right, yeah, he probably wouldn't appreciate that. What was I thinking? Okay.
And then I can provide that information that I, that I get from him at the next meeting as well.
Sure.
And then regarding the SSJID project, you recall we had a presentation on that a while back, on the, on the option that the council selected to move forward with. I'll be meeting with SSJID, Claire and I both, later on this week, to go over that with both our consultant with PACE, as well as SSJID, and we'll be, we'll be moving that forward.
You left a number.
For the next few months.
You put a number in the report, which is kind of hard to understand, because there's no decimals or anything in there, I thought. So could you explain to me what that is?
Which report is that?
Uh, hang on, let me find it here.
Are you, are you thinking of the wastewater item?
That's what it was, yeah.
Okay, that's a different project. This is for the surface water.
Got it, got it.
And then that number we can go over on that.
On the surface water, they haven't given us a proposal yet. They came in did a verbal, but they're gonna give us a written one now. Is that correct?
On the SSJID, he gave us the estimate for the project costs, and that was the.
The verbal.
Yeah, basically. And so he's given us that estimate based on the project and the, the option that we selected, and we'll be moving forward with that, so we should be able.
Are we gonna move forward without not knowing all the details?
No, not at all. It will come back to you.
So we'll get a chance to review it before we sign up for it?
Correct. We just need to make sure that, that SSJID is open with the option we select, so we're not moving forward on something that, that isn't appropriate for their system and their type.
And we've done our due diligence with them in terms of whether or not the water would be available with that.
Water's available.
It is available, and there's no penalties for removing the water from the previous customer we're selling to?
I spoke to the previous customer today. They will be disappointed in losing that water. They like having that water.
Tell them to double the price.
But they're understandable to it, and they do receive water from another agency as well, because they pull from two different systems.
Sure.
And so they would, it sounds like they would just require more of that one, but they do like it. And, and SSJID appears to be very excited and motivated to move forward with the project, and so I think it's, I think it's gonna work out really well.
Well, I hope it does.
And that is all I have on my updates, and then I have Justin here on the phone. If you wanna go ahead and provide your update, Justin?
Can you hear me on the computer?
What, is my phone not working now? Oh, there it is.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Hello, council. I just wanted to give an update on a few projects going on in town. One being the water meter project. It's going fairly well. We are over halfway done. Going really smooth. They've had, experienced a few corrosions on the property side, but we're getting them fixed right away. We've also had a few calls this week as far as meter lids sticking up from transmitters. They are addressing those right away, so if anybody out there is having any kind of issues, please let us know right away so we can get to it. Slurry project has been completed as far as the slurry is on the ground. The next process will be striping, and then we will be going through a punch list with corrections. So they did improve the process as they went along. You see, many looks really good, but there are some corrections that will be made, need to be made, and we will make sure that's addressed before we do any financial settling. So other than that, everything's going good on the public work side. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions on any of this we've discussed?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I can't quite hear you.
That's not for you, Justin, but. Anyway.
Just checking to make sure council doesn't have questions.
Okay, so we don't have any more input. We're gonna move on.
Okay, thank you, Justin.
Are we ready to move on? Staff? Ready to move on?
We're ready.
Okay, here we go. Matters presented from the audience. The public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the authority of the city council. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unusements may not be yielded to another speaker. The determination of whether an item is within the authority of the city council is a discretionary decision made by the mayor. All right, let's have anyone who's got something they'd like to speak this evening, please come to the podium and give us your name.
Al Bellinger, 719 California Street here. I'm here tonight. There's nothing on agenda that I want to discuss. I'm here representing the American Legion, and I wanted to let everybody know for information purposes that we will be having a parade on Veterans Day at 10:30 downtown, down at Main Street in Escalon. At 11 o'clock, we'll have a service at the Community Center. And then at 12 o'clock, we'll be serving a dinner, which will be consistent of either a half a chicken or ribs. You take your pick, which one you want. A lot of people have the wives take the chicken and the men take the ribs.
This is the way it works.
We'll have, it comes with beans and salads and desserts. The price on it is $11 per meal. I do have tickets, so anybody that, if you cannot contact me, you can contact David E. Get ahold of me. My number is the easiest one in Escalon to remember, 838-3388. Been that way for 55 years. So thank you.
Uh, Al?
Yes, sir.
The parade is what time?
10:30.
10:30. Thank you.
So you better be there.
You know I will.
And I do have tickets, so if anybody wants tickets tonight, I have tickets for the dinner.
Thank you. All right, anyone else like to come up this evening and express whatever your concerns are? Okay, is there anybody on the phone land or TV land that wants to chime in here? Doesn't sound like it. Okay.
I have one more note to make.
Sure.
That I should have given you in my staff communications. I did speak with the property owner regarding item number eight, and she has requested that that item be moved to the next meeting.
Okay.
So we'll go ahead and just continue that item to the next meeting.
Perfect. Okay, next meeting, good. All right. Administrative matters. Report on agenda item requested from Danell Hagan regarding the state issued mandate for COVID-19 vaccination. Staff.
Dominique, is there a way to get the agenda on the screen?
Oh, it should have been on your screen. Is that better?
Yeah.
Perfect. Sorry about that.
So in accordance with the city's agenda policy, which was adopted on May 3rd, 2021, if a member of the public wishes to request an item to be placed on the agenda, they may do so in writing using the adopted form. The request will then be shared by the city manager during a regular city council meeting to determine if there is support by the majority of the city council. Once an item has been supported by the majority of the city council, the item will be placed on a future city council meeting. The public member may submit additional information as appropriate or as requested by staff. Any supporting documents and electronic materials must be submitted at least six days, six days prior to the city council meeting to allow staff time to review and integrate these materials into the staff report. The agenda item request received from Danell Hagan is regarding a resolution to stand in opposition to the state-issued COVID-19 mandates for students, teachers, and other school employees. And we do have Ms. Hagan in the audience, and she is interested in speaking to you.
Very good. Please come up to the podium, give us your name, and explain what you'd like to tell us.
Good evening, council. Thank you. My name's Danell Hagan. I'm new to local government, so thanks for being patient with me and understanding, you know, how I navigate this whole process. So I came across this article, and I had something written up, but I'm just kinda gonna wing it, if you will. I plan to use my time this evening to encourage you all to look at what's happening near and far in our great state of California, and to see what some amazing leaders are doing, as I encourage us to do the same. I've been reading and researching recently past resolutions happening all around us, on the school board side, on the city council side, and so I wanted to share those with you. And one of those articles was from the town of Hesperia, California, which is in Southern California, but regardless. I tried to share this article with you all on your email. I shared it with Dominique as well. So what they did as a city council is they had some resolutions that I was able to get via email today from their mayor, Cameron Gregg. So I could present those to you guys as well, because a couple days ago last week, when I actually sent you guys the article on your email, I didn't have the resolutions themselves. I actually have those on me right now, if you guys would like to take a look at those. Basically, Resolution Number 202153, "The Resolution of the City Council of the City of Hesperia, California Declaring Opposition to the COVID-19 Vaccine Mandates for Hesperia Unified District Teachers, Other School Employees and Students, and Any Resulting Disciplinary Actions Up to and Including Termination of Any Discrimination Against Staff, Students, and Parents." I'll continue. There was two resolutions. Resolution 2021-54, "The Resolution of the City Council of the City of Hesperia, California Declaring Opposition to Vaccine Mandates for All Residents of Hesperia, Including Individuals Who Work in Hesperia, Individuals Who Conduct Business There As Well." So those are the copies of the resolution that I obtained from their mayor, like I just said. And as you guys know, a couple weeks ago, the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors passed, you know, an opposition to the vaccine mandate for people to come into businesses in San Joaquin County. So I'm kinda using what places have done not so close to us, Southern California is not so close to us, but they're really doing some great things. And that's my motion. That's what I would like for you guys to do, is to help me form this resolution to where we could stand up and say, hey, this is Escalon, California, and we are opposing these vaccine mandates. I know and I understand that you guys don't have any legal jurisdiction over the school board. I'm going there tomorrow. Don't worry about it. But as a community, if we can say, hey, this is not right. This is tyrannical. This is government overreach, and our, our students, our kids deserve better. Like, we should not be forced to have a vaccine mandate of something that has not been yet tested very long. So I'm, I'm actually just kinda reaching out to you guys to try to see if we could come up with a resolution for our city to say, hey, we're not gonna stand for this. The last little bit that I wanted to share with you guys tonight, and I can, you know, leave these resolutions for you, or I could email you them, whatever's easiest for you. It was an email that I was going back and forth with the mayor, like I said, Cameron Gregg. I was telling him how I, you know, recently come across his article in the Daily Press, and I was really impressed, and I was like, how did you do this? Please, show me the way, so that I could take it back to you guys. And he responded. He reached out to me, quickly sent me the resolution, so I had copies of those to give to you guys. And he said, "Good afternoon, Danell. Please share the attached resolutions. Please feel free to announce my phone number for the board to contact." He left his, his personal phone number. "Now is the time we put aside political ambitions and do the right thing by standing up for our children. We stand with you and best of luck tonight. If you need any assistance, please let me know." So, you know, he's more than willing to support us as we kinda navigate this process and figure out what we need to do to kinda stand up and say, hey, we don't want this here in Escalon Unified, or, sorry, just Escalon, the city council, unified's tomorrow. But to just say, we're giving our citizens the right to choose. We support their freedoms, and we don't support these vaccine mandates that are coming down from the state. So if you guys would like the copies of the resolutions.
I have a question for you.
Leave them here. I'm open to questions.
If I may, mayor and council member, I just wanna remind everybody that it's not the actual resolution or discussion. There is no discussion to be had on the issue itself. What's before the council is just whether it should go on a future agenda to be discussed. So that's the only thing before the council tonight.
Man, what a party spoiler. All right.
I'm, I prefaced that.
So we are, we are pretty much handcuffed, thanks to our legal counsel here. And so we can't really do anything, other than thank you for coming down and exploring this idea with us. And as far as getting it on the list agenda, now that she can do?
No, so the request from our citizen is to see if there's a consensus by this council to put it on agenda to allow the public to just have this discussion and consider a draft resolution, one way or the other, or neither.
She needs two, right?
So at this point, since it's by the, the public, we need a majority of the council members to agree to put this on the agenda in the future.
So do I call for a vote?
Well, you could.
Our consensus.
You can have a consensus. You can also ask, we need a little bit of public comment to see if there's any other persons that want to provide their input on whether this council should or should not even consider discussing this in the future.
All right, let's do that. Danell, have a seat for now, and let's see what else is out there, and if not, we'll bring you back to the council for a vote, or a consensus.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone out there who would like to come up and speak regarding this issue? Come on up and just give us your name, please.
Hello, my name is Corinne Whitlow. I really wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but definitely in support of what Danell had presented with what's kinda going on in the world. I think it's very important right now that we have people who are representing us at a local level to just really support our community's values and our constitutional rights. So thank you for considering this, and I really, I definitely support what she's asking from you guys.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone on the phones or the computers or whatever else? Oh, here we got another one, okay. We need your name, please.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, city council members. My name's Diana Trejo, and I come before you tonight as a parent of children in the school district here in the city. I'm gonna start by saying that I am in complete support of what Danielle has already proposed to you. I'm not anti-vaccine. I believe the COVID vaccine is beneficial for some people. However, I am anti-mandate. I believe everyone should have the autonomy to choose what's injected in their body and the bodies of their children, especially if that vaccine carries the risk of harm. I think the state's overreaching in their authority and that the vaccine be administered to children in order to attend school. A little bit about my reasoning. The government says we must save the children, and I say, save them from what? According to the Academy of Pediatrics in the United States, children who've contracted COVID have a 99.997 chance of survivability. That's a 0.003% chance of death. Children are more likely to experience adverse reactions to the vaccine than they are dying of COVID. The government's saying if everyone gets vaccinated, we can eradicate COVID. It's gonna be impossible to eradicate COVID. It's here to stay. As we've seen, those who are vaccinated for COVID still contract the virus. They still show symptoms, and they still pass it on to other people. Studies have shown that the vaccine provides protection, lessens the effect of COVID for the people who get the vaccine. But contrary to what we were all originally told, it doesn't protect those around them. Furthermore, according to the CDC, COVID is zoonotic. That means it's shareable between animals and humans. The Cincinnati Zoo recently vaccinated 80 of their animals. Therefore, even if 100% of the human population was vaccinated, COVID would still exist. It would still mutate and transfer between animals and humans, because it's impossible to eliminate every carrier. So why are we mandating, forcing and forcing people to vaccinate if it doesn't accomplish their goal? Government says, well, kids are already vaccinated for other diseases to attend school, so what's different about this one? The difference is the longevity of studies of those vaccines. Measles had five years of trials. It's been out for 68 years. Mumps went through 19 years of trials. It's been out for 54 years. The polio vaccine went through 25 years of trials. It's been out for 61 years. These vaccines have decades of medical data history. There's been time to see the short-term effects, long-term effects, reproductive repercussions. COVID vaccine isn't even fully approved yet, and it's being mandated for children. Hasn't had the decades of trials, the studies. The effects are unknown. My children, our children, are not experiments. It should be the parents' choice to decide when enough data is available to decide whether to get the shot. In addition to the reasons vaccination not making sense for the young children, we are seeing young children presenting with some scary vaccine injuries, including heart inflammation, neurological issues, and even death. While the current mandate would allow for personal and religious exemptions, some legislators, legislators are already talking about new laws to remove those exemptions. And despite parents making their voices heard across the state at school board meetings, contacting state legislators, keeping their kids home from school on walkout days, protesting at the Capitol, submitting comments to the FDA hearings, it appears the FDA and state are pushing forward, ignoring parents' pleas for freedom of choice. And I know that city government's separate from the school district, and we have no jurisdiction over what they do. So why am I here? Because it seems that the voices of individual citizens are falling on deaf ears at the state level. We need more voices to be heard. We need unity. We need to not be complacent. We need to speak up for what we believe. And while state legislators may not be listening to the individuals, they may listen to local city governments and county governments. We, the parents, are trying every avenue possible to be heard. So if there's anything the City of Escalon can do to support. So if there's anything the City of Escalon can do to support parents' choice and voice opposition to the mandate, we would really appreciate it.
Thank you, Diana. Very well done. All right, is there anyone else? Okay, please give us your name.
Thank you, Councilman Kurt Danziger. Was not going to address this issue tonight. I knew it was coming back. I would tell you a couple of things. I almost lost my dog here a month ago, and was in the vet for a couple of days, and we didn't know what was wrong. They still don't know what was wrong with her. And that was one of the questions I asked. Could she have COVID-19? And the doctor told me, no. Dogs, animals do get COVID, but not human COVID. They get animal COVID. So all I can tell you is, I came from my veterinarian, if it's worth anything to you. Last Friday, the Supreme Court turned down a challenge by the state of New Hampshire healthcare workers about losing their jobs if they didn't get vaccinated. And they actually sued because of a religious exemption. Again, the Supreme Court ruled against them and said that they didn't have a case for it. I'm not against anybody having a freedom of choice. That's not why I'm here. I think you need to study the issue more before we just go out and hand out a resolution. Maybe we get the San Joaquin County Health Officer in here to talk to you, excuse me, and let the audience ask them some questions, if they haven't had the opportunity to do that already. So I just, it's a school board issue, you can weigh in, but I think you need more facts. You're not the Supreme Court, you're not medical people, you know, you're just people with opinions. Have it educated, that's all I would say. Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there anybody on the phone lines or computers out there that would like to add anything? Okay, thank you. So, gentlemen, what's your pleasure here? Do you guys feel like we're going to bring this back and take a harder look at it?
Yeah, I'd absolutely love to bring it back.
Okay.
That'd be great.
I struggle with the fact that this isn't the form for that. That's my biggest struggle, so my... There's no. School board, yes. Board it, but not here.
And, yes. We have four yeses, so we will bring it back. All right, very good. Thank you for the information. It's worth the look at, although you understand we have limited capacity here, but we do share your feelings. All right, let's move on. Where am I here? Okay. Report on the agenda item request from the council member Swift and Mayor Al regarding a community survey for the skate park. Okay, staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Unlike the last item, this is being put on the agenda in accordance with the city's agenda policy. A consensus of two council members was needed in order to put it on the agenda. Once this item has been supported by at least one other council member on top of those two, the item would be placed on a future agenda. Council members may submit additional information as appropriate or requested by staff, and a council member's written request becomes an attachment to the staff report. So we did include that request, which was request a survey be placed in the next city water bill regarding the desire of the community to spend city monies from the Recreation Fund and/or General Fund for a skate park.
My concern, as I got a couple of phone calls, I explained to people that there seemed to be a real need for this, and they said, how do I know? Well, I don't, I believe, because people have told me they want it, but again, how do you weigh that? I don't know how to weigh that. And Councilman Swift brought to my attention that maybe we ought to look at a survey. I said, yeah, maybe we should. So that's where we're at with this.
Yeah, well, my concern is I want to make sure this is a big issue, and unfortunately, it's probably a lot more controversial than what it needs to be. But I recall that meeting, that first meeting, I believe it was September 2019, and the subject was regarding, of course, you know, there was a survey that went out, there were three items on that survey, which of the three, you know, you rank them. You know, of course, it was, and it had to do with spending rec fund money, it had to do with, I believe, the porta potties improvement or redoing the porta potties, the skate park, and then the parking lot, you know, that temporary parking lot. And I noticed very quickly that a lot of this, and of course, in order to do, you know, the porta potties, we had the money within the budget, you know, within the rec fund, you know, the parking lot, we had the money within the rec fund. The skate park, of course, we would have had to go rec fund and then beyond rec fund and tap into the general fund monies, or any of those combinations thereof. Okay, we would have had to tap into that. And I remember that meeting, and I remember that it was not received very well at all, the notion of spending, either tapping out the rec fund, which would have meant, if we would have gone with the skate park, we would have tapped out the rec fund and almost invariably going to general fund monies. And that's the crux of my concern with this issue. And the reason I wanted to see on the survey, and I know it's completely unscientific, but I want to get the pulse of the community on this, the taxpaying community first, before we go through any MOUs or anything like that, to make sure that is a public now okay with, you know, spending this kind of money draining the Recreation Fund for this purpose. It's not an argument as to whether or not we need or want a skate park. Now, I firmly believe that a skate park personally is a want versus a need, but there are certain times in this town where, you know what, if we can swing it, great. But the way we're looking at swinging this is something that we really need to make sure that the public has complete buy-in on first. What the survey, what I would suggest the survey would say, will be something along the lines of, should the City Council dedicate $220,000 of the available $224,000 in the Recreation Fund towards a future skate park, and leave open the possibility of tapping into general fund monies in order to make up any shortfall that may arise in the construction of said skate park? It'd be a yes and a no, yes or no, and then, of course, you'd want to leave a section for comments, and that's what I'm proposing this evening.
One of the things that concerned me so much was that you have a small vocal group that says no, and then one says yes. It doesn't give me a comfort zone where I know who and what we're really dealing with. And that's, in terms of the money spent, I think it'd be a good spending. I don't have a problem with that. It's just much, I'd like a buy-in. I want to make sure that this community knows that transparency is the most important thing we have, and I want to make sure that we have that transparency moving forward.
I got a few things. So, a couple of things have been brought up about the skate park. First of all, what Councilman Swift said for his survey, he wants to know if the community would be okay with spending $220,000 for a skate park, and if necessary, tapping the general fund for overage costs. I think that is a very narrow-minded survey that people would not understand, people that aren't in the know of what the fund is, what we spend the money on, how much is it, would lead a lot of people to go, no, absolutely not, I don't want to spend that money. But they don't understand what's been going on, and to include in there, we've never said it's okay to tap the general fund for overages, that's never been part of the discussion. So that should not be included in there. We earmarked 220 to match the 80 that the Parks Foundation had to set a budget of $300,000, which is not a big budget, and we're building to our budget. Okay, so that's the first thing. So that survey would not be accurate, I'm not in favor of that. The other thing is about buy-in. We've been talking about buy-in from the community for years and years. The Parks Foundation was established to raise money for a skate park. We've had numerous fundraisers, the fireworks booth, we've had people, Mayor Prodom Leggero has made numerous comments on people giving their lunch money towards this, for young kids who want a skate park. So sending out another survey at this point to see what the temperature is, to me, is just an over redundancy. We already know what the temperature is. There's a few select people out there that don't want a skate park because of the stigma, or they don't like the idea of it for some reason. And then there's a vast majority of people that have young kids that want a place to go and ride their scooters and skateboard or ride their bikes. We already know what the community buy-in is. So I am in no way in favor of sending out another survey for this. This, to me, is a step backwards, and so I will not support a survey, another survey to get more feedback, which we've already received on this item. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else?
I would kind of echo what Peter said as far as survey as another one. We've had a survey, we didn't do this with the restroom expenditures to dissect it, to how much we were spending to go out to the community for like-minded quantities of money.
Good point.
So I'm not sure why we're doing it now for the skate park, because we've got some folks maybe on the right side or the left side of said project, whether they want it or not. So for consistency, I'm not really sure that we need to do that. The survey is just a couple of years old at this point, from my understanding, so I think we can continue moving forward. We've given them a budget, I think, until we've received back from the Parks Foundations from, what was the name of the organization, Jeff?
Dreamscape.
Dreamscape. I think we're just at a standstill till we get back to see if that budget will actually be workable. I think we're kind of putting the cart before the horse at the current moment. They haven't come back with anything, to my knowledge. Until we get that back, I don't think we need to worry about whether or not there's a move-forward situation, because we don't know if that budget works for them. So that's why I would not be in favor of a survey at this time at all.
Didn't we approve, we voted and approved the funds?
Yes.
No.
Council earmarked one.
Earmark.
Well, okay, so we've already voted in a majority to earmark funds for a skate park.
They're not dedicated. In other words, you're earmarking for it, but until it's actually voted on to agree, to sign the contract to get the park going and therefore legally commit the funds, I guess I should say it that way, the funds are not legally committed yet. So they can be, even though you earmark it for that, at some point, the budget could come back, and all of a sudden, everyone goes, whoa, this is just not feasible, it doesn't make any sense whatsoever, we're not doing that, and now we're going to take that money and earmark it for something else or use it for something else. So yes, it has been earmarked for that by the majority of the board.
The thing is, I'm not against the skate park. I think it's wonderful, but the bottom line for me is I have to be accountable to the people in this community. So if I'm going to sign on for the money to be moved into that direction, I need to know personally that that's the consensus of this community. And if that last survey, did the last survey say specifically they were in favor of the skate park and using the funds? I mean, I don't know, I don't remember what it said. What did it say?
If I recall correctly, it asked people to itemize the top three items.
And what were the top three items?
The first one was...
Bathroom.
Was it the bathroom?
No, no, the first one, the parking.
First one was over, the parking.
Parking was in first.
The second one was the bathroom, and then the skate park came in third.
That was the third of three.
Correct.
So we've done two, so...
Just a moment. First of all, the facilitating of the park, I mean, the parking reaches a broad spectrum of people, a very broad spectrum of people, number one. The bathroom fits the same category. Now, skate park, again, have no opposition against it, I couldn't care less. I mean, I should say that. I would like kids to have stuff they need and have fun with, that's more what I should say. But at the same time, it doesn't cross the spectrum that the other two did, in terms of how many people are going to be affected by it. What I just would love to know, beyond a shadow of a doubt, this community endorses it, because if they do, let's do it and do it quick. And I have no problem taking those funds and giving them to that committee.
So in order to get, you want to know the total community, you want to know the community has got buy-in, and so the method of procuring that information is through the water bill, right? That's sending out a survey with the water bills. Am I reading that right?
That is the same as Prop 218 and all the other things we've done in the past.
So here's my thing with that, is my bill to the city is set up on automatic payment, right? So I don't ever read the newsletter or the water bill necessarily, because I don't always read that. And when we do surveys like this, we normally get about 100 to 150 responses out of a community of 2,500 household, 8,000 people. It does not represent the majority of this community. And I think we need to remember, the majority of this community doesn't even know that there's a meeting going on right now, and that we know from other factors, be it the longevity of the Parks Foundation, and the fireworks booth, and the community communicating to us. To me, there's already been demonstrated an overwhelming response for this from the people who are going to use it. So I think a survey at this point is an absolute waste of time, and I don't think we should do one.
I'm going to have to differ with you a little bit there. The majority of people, the supporters, are the people that want it, and that's the majority of people. We also see a smaller faction of people that didn't want it. So to say that's the, what's the word, endorsement, I'd argue that doesn't really qualify. Again, the park is a good thing. It's not, we shouldn't have a problem with the park, but it needs to be certified by the community, not just a couple of groups coming in here and hacking it out. And that's what we've had. We've had a couple of groups come in and hack it out. We've never had a true reading, and you're right about the survey, it's a tough survey because, you're right, the apathy in this town, like all other towns, is prevalent. Most people don't care what happens until it affects them directly and it's too late. That's the way it works, like the 218 we just had. I can guarantee you, when that thing gets done, we're going to hear phone calls from everybody going, I can't believe this, I can't believe that. That's the nature of the beast we're dealing with, okay? All I'm proposing, and I think Robert actually proposed, but I'm agreeing with Robert, that we need to get a good, clear picture of what people are thinking. Now, if there's a better way to get that picture, I'm all for it, but I do think we need that buy-in. That's just all.
So I think that, I don't think that you've got three votes up here to put the survey out there. I am not in favor of it, and I would make a motion that we do not send a survey out to the community on this item, because we've already done so multiple times, and we've already gotten feedback from the city. So that would be my motion tonight.
I can't disagree with that more. We've only sent that survey out one time with only three items on it. But the issue, and by the way, I do agree with you on this one part, I think that explaining what the Parks, what the Recreation Fund, what it is spent for, I think is a very good idea. I'll give you a perfect case in point. Do people know that? Now, Mayor Al, you mentioned that there's a gentleman that can take out those, almost about $400 an acre.
Yes.
Did some quick math, $10,000. What fund would that likely come out of? Okay? As of right now, that's $10,000 that would come out of a fund, where we technically only have $4,000 spendable in it. Okay? So I think that that's a very important point, is to explain to people what this fund is and what it goes for. And I think what concerns me is that, you know, I'm hearing everybody, everybody who goes to the, you know, the skate park, I mean, the fireworks booth and the wine booth, they love it, it's a great idea. I think the concept's a great idea, okay? But then, I hear that, and then yet, what I'm consistently told is, hey, you're not going to spend the city's money on this, right? That's the Parks Foundation, let them raise the money themselves, you know, for something like this. You're not going to spend the city's money, and that's all that I've ever heard for 10 years. That's all that I ever heard at this first meeting in September 2019. Don't spend all the city's money on this. If the Parks Foundation wants it, we'll support them as a community, like we support the Lions, like we support the Legion, like we support all these other groups, but keep it separated as it was meant to be. And so, and another point, if the notion of spending any more monies other than the recreation, the 220 out of the Recreation Fund that's been earmarked, if any other monies that I know we were discussing about last meeting, like in case we went, the Parks Foundation went over the $300,000 budget, what might we need to tap into general fund monies? And that was the subject of the MOU that Mark you're writing. If that's definitely off the table, then that's something, because I know there's going to be no taste out there to be spending general fund monies on something like that, instead of, again, I hate to keep looking at you, Chief Lockett, instead of police cars, okay? All I'm saying, the reason I'm suggesting this survey, and the reason Mayor Al is suggesting the survey as well, is just to get some other read, because we are hearing two totally different stories. Two of us are hearing a totally different story than it sounds like the other three are hearing on this dais. And so again, that's part of the reason why I'm suggesting a survey as well.
I've got two points, if you may. One, with the respect that the skate park is for a limited number of users as opposed to the whole community, just to remind everybody, this City Council has earmarked acreage for a senior development that is very much specific to a small group of people in this community. So it's not a one-off thing that we're doing here, so keep that in consideration. Number two, the fact that we have a Parks Foundation working diligently to the best of their ability currently to raise money. I didn't see anybody in this community put together a group of people to help donate[1768.11] and work to fundraise to put a new bathroom up in that community center either. So I think that trying to put it all on a Parks Foundation on a basis of that is unfair from other folks in this, in the community with that, with, if that's the way they're thinking, in my opinion.
Well, I think where you draw the line with that, and that's a good point, I think where you draw the line, that is, you know, with the public, the public funds, you always go after what's the greatest good, the general good. And I think Mayor Alz touched on this as well. You know, what is the greatest good? And then from there, you can have ancillary projects, you know, that people would like to spearhead in within the community. And so again, what side of this line does a skate park fall on? Does it fall on, and especially, and we're just talking about city monies. Does it fall on the side where the city can justify spending monies, okay, for, and I don't know how many people enjoy the park. Frankly, I go by the Oakdale Skate Park all the time. Now granted, you, while we see people there, there are multiple uses there, basketball courts, women's walking court areas, okay? Um, granted, it is fenced in, which I would highly advise this park do the same, but that park has multiple uses, it has a pavilion, okay? Now, I know this park won't be able to have any of those things, but still. Um, so I think that it's not a matter of people will, will not go to the park. The question is how many would be able, would be going to a park like this and does it justify the size of the expenditure of public funds? That's what I wanna find out.
Go ahead.
Just to recap, the, Peter made the motion about the two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars to basically earmark that, to have a number, to come up with an overall budget that we would be willing to support to complete the park. There was never a conversation about going into the general fund. It was a worst-case scenario. It'd be two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars out of the recreation fund or another fund that the council agreed to draw those funds from. So it wasn't going to eliminate the recreation fund. That was just a number that was used to designate, okay, we got two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, or two-hundred-and-twenty-four, twenty-five thousand in there. Let's use two-twenty as the number, plus the eighty, that's three-hundred thousand dollars. Now, uh, it would not be a park foundation project, it would be a city project, so that's a non-issue. We're not turning over two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars to the Parks Foundation to, to build this. It would be us using recreation funds or funds from another fund of our choosing that we're in agreement with to fund it and leverage our dollars for the eighty thousand dollars that the Parks Foundation has raised over the years. That's eighty thousand dollars of buy-in from this community. That's eighty thousand dollars more buy-in than we've had on any other project with the exception of perhaps the pool, when that went out for fundraising in the community. So I, I agree with Peter and I agree with Dave. The, to put this in the water bill, to say, hey, do you, do you support the city spending community or spending city funds on a skate park? It doesn't accomplish what you're trying to accomplish. We will get a minimal return on that, uh, just like you pointed out, two-eighteen.
No, they're joking.
You know, it, nothing happens until the rubber meets the road. It's on the agenda and it's time to commit those monies. All we've done to this point is said, look, I think there's a need, the majority of the council think there is a need, uh, and a desire for this community to have their own skate park so they don't have to go to other jurisdictions for their skate parks. We have an opportunity to leverage dollars that have been raised, uh, from the community's pocket to build a skate park. That's all we're doing at this point. The two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars is a number that is in the rec fund right now. It potentially could go up, it could go down. The skate park and the, the Parks Foundation can go, once they have that number and they've worked with the builder to come up with a project that meets the three-hundred-thousand-dollar budget, then they can go out and they can go to the community. They could talk to P and L, they've got steel producers that are willing to donate, uh, materials to go out and say, look, this is our budget, this is where we're at, what can you do for us? And that way, they can actually go with a number to the community and say, what can you do to help reduce that amount? That two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars of city funding from a rec fund at this point is solely a number that would be the maximum amount that we would be willing to support the, uh, the park with. That could change. By the time this thing gets to a point where we're gonna sit there and, and talk about actually, um, designating that number or that dollar amount, that's when you have a hearing. That's when you have another hearing and you have the community weigh in at that point when you're, when it's time to designate that, that funding. All we're trying to do is say, look, the community has already said that they want it. They've said it at the, um, when we had to do a master plan, it was a waste of money to do a master plan for the, the fifteen-million-dollar project that's never gonna happen. It's already changed because we're gonna use some of that property, um, for our surface water project. It was in the, the skate park was in the first phase. The, uh, person we had a lease with was okay with the overflow parking and the skate park there. Um, we, then, that wasn't enough. We had to go do, when we did designate a place for the skate park on the existing Hogan Ennis Field, uh, park, then at that point, it was like, well, no, let's do a master plan. So then we spend the money for the master plan and then we move it from the location that we had at the skate park or, or at the, uh, Ennis Hogan Field, we move it into the new area, um, the O, the additional park space. So we spent money to do that. Then that was done and it gets put on the master plan and then it's like, okay, now what are we, now we've got money to spend, so what are we gonna spend it on? Well, now we need to do a survey. So now they send the survey out and we send the survey out and there's three items on the survey and all three of those are supported and we've done two of the three so far. So, you know, we're, we're trying to move this down the field with the money that has been raised. Yes, it's gonna be a city project. Yes, it's gonna use city funds. Yes, there will be prevailing wage, but if we don't do something to move this forward, we're gonna be sitting here having another, uh, I don't know, another ten years of sitting around, talking about this project and then every time we get close and we have money that's available to do it, we're gonna have another survey and see what the community temperature is in ten years. So the temperature right now is build a skate park and I'm willing to designate city funds to do that because I believe that there is a city, an absolute need, not only a want, but a need in this community to provide, uh, recreational facilities for these kids.
Yeah.
So I'm against another survey. I'm, I'm all for moving the ball down the, the field and, uh, having the, the MOU go forward, having the continued talks with the Park Foundation to, you know, basically their role in this is to hand the city a check for eighty thousand dollars, you know? So it's not like that we're turning things over to them. So now it's, okay, here's your budget, go to the builder, see what they can do for, for that budget. And then if they can do something that's reasonable, that meets the need of the community, then they come back and that's when we say, okay, the money's there, fund it. Am I wrong? That's where we're at, right?
No, 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 and I agree with that, but the only question is, is it, therefore, do we wait until the MOU, until we know what kind of budget we're looking at?
We've already set the budget. We said, we're, the city says two-hundred-and-twenty grand.
Right.
The Parks Foundation has a little over eighty right now, which could go up by the time this gets situated. And then it, but our contribution of two-twenty is a max. It can go down significantly from there depending upon the donations that they can get from steel, concrete, whatever.
Right. But the question, but again, regarding the MOU, should we commit? I mean, my concern, even within the rec fund, I would feel a lot more comfortable if we had like six, seven-hundred thousand in it. We might be in that spot ten years from now.
We might be in that spot and we get the, uh, the services review done.
Might.
We start annexing stuff in, we might be in that position in a couple of months. That's not gonna say, oh, now we want five-hundred thousand dollars for the skate park. We're still saying we're using two-twenty as the number to move forward.
Right. And just, just to clarify, if I may, Councilman Mayor, um, the only issue for discussion right now is whether there should be a survey put out on the next, on a water bill. That's really the only.
We're expanding on that.
Well, that's why I'm stopping, stopping you from expanding on that.
Don't stop us.
How do you have an issue like that and not discuss the surrounding items around it? That to me is kinda odd. You know, we're discussing whether or not we should have this, uh, survey, but it's important to discuss why, whether I, they're right or we're wrong or whoever's right and wrong. It's important to have that discussion. So I, it's kinda, you know, I don't understand why you would not want us to be able to discuss why that survey's important or not important.
Well, if you've noticed, I, you've been going on for quite a while. I haven't stopped you.
You just brought your attention to it.
Well, circling back.
And the worst part, we could probably go on all night like this. And this is unfortunately, I think, part and parcel of this issue. So that's really what we're talking about.
My deference, Council, is, uh, this usually is one of the point I say, is there, should we put this out to the, to the public to see if there's any comments by the public? Is that sometimes brings us back around?
All righty. Are there anyone in the audience, online, would like to speak regarding this issue? Uh, just your name, please.
Kurt Danziger, and I've been listening to everybody speak tonight and everybody's all over the board. Problem with this issue is it was set up to do one thing and then it's taken some jogs that haven't been documented. And I refer back to two years ago when there had been no actions coming forth from the Park Foundation and there was a motion to, uh, set a time limit on when the MOU was gonna be done and if it wasn't gonna be signed by a certain date in December, the land was going away. Well, Mayor, uh, Swift amended that at the next meeting and said that, uh, he'd like to amend the last motion of the November eighteen, two thousand and nineteen to take off the current designation in the Hogan Ennis Master Plan will no longer be valid and to read if the memorandum of understanding is not received back, signed by the next council meeting of December second, twenty nineteen, the current MOU process is invalid. So by default, it's invalid and it went back to the original MOU. We don't need another MOU. You have to make a decision. Is this a Park Foundation project? Is this a city project?
City project.
If it's a city project, the MOU is superfluous. You don't need it. And at that point, you get the monies from the skate, uh, from the Park Foundation, you put them into the recreation fund, general fund, wherever you think they should go. Dissolve the Park Foundation because they're never gonna be able to get enough funds for the skate park. Uh, I'm gonna go to the survey now. I, I just wanted to point that out. I agree, the survey isn't gonna accomplish what you want it to. And, and the reason, several, there's no cost out here. You're just asking, what do you think? Well, who cares what you think? What happens when you tell them, well, we get, we budgeted three-hundred thousand, but because the city's sending out RFPs and there's prevailing wage and we can't get in-kind services from, uh, the company, the, uh, Park Foundation it's set up because now, now they're in competition, this is gonna go to six, seven-hundred thousand dollars, who knows? You gotta attach a dollar amount to whatever you're going to do a, as far as the survey. And I think a survey of a different kind is in order. The funds from the, uh, Park Foundation, put it on the next ballot, that'll be your survey. I think that there's people on both sides of this issue here. I'm neutral, you know, whatever comes out. If you take, if the city takes the money out of the park, uh, budget, what are you gonna replace it with? You got, baseball still goes on, soccer still goes on, football goes on, you gotta pay the referees, what have you. It's gonna come out of the general fund. And it, it's whether it's out of the reserves or the general fund, the general fund's gonna pay for it. So if it's a city project, you should just disband the Park Foundation right now and say, okay, look, let, let's have either a public hearing or let's put it on the ballot. Let's let everybody just tell us how we feel and we can be done with this issue. We don't need MOUs, costs too much money, put the money into a ballot issue. Uh, and if you're gonna put it on a survey, should you decide to do that, put the cost there and the cost is gonna have to come from staff because it's gonna be a city project. And I realize people put in their lunch monies and I, and I love that story too, but the parents, they, they didn't. You had, you know, eight days of fundraisers for the last ten years, about a thousand dollars a day. Congratulations, but this is a big project. This costs a lot of money. It's, it's, it's a big project. It's a city project. And as far as the senior housing goes, I disagree with you, uh, Councilman Bellinger. Uh, earmarking the senior housing, uh, land out there was going to utilize in lieu funds, which is what those funds were for. So you're using city money in city, uh, the city park, the city park area to fund that project. And that is a necessity project in my mind, but I don't wanna get in.
Acreage is different than in lieu of funds.
Project over anybody else's. But again, I just, I don't think you need a regular survey. I think you need a ballot issue and I think you need to make a decision of who's gonna run this project. And you, you can't say that Dreamland or whoever they are gonna run it and get in-kind services when it's a city project. Cause it's, that's not gonna be allowed, is that right? I'm sorry, you, did you lose your?
Well, there's some things I just can't or won't answer when it's put, put in that place, but.
Well, that, that's, that's the issue though, Mark. If, if the city's gonna fund it, the city's gonna have to do the project. You're not gonna give the money to a, a nonprofit and then, and hope that it, uh, the taxpayers don't see it.
Let me put it a different way. That's a perfect discussion. That would be, it's a perfect item during a, uh, hearing on the, on the matter.
All right. Well, thank you for your time.
All right. Is there anyone else? If there's no one else, we're gonna bring it back and we're gonna get a vote this evening and whatever the vote is, it is. That is the will of the council and that's where we're gonna go with it. And then if it does.
We gonna vote or a motion?
I made a motion.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor. That's not.
Before we go further though, my understanding is if the survey is killed, which is what I couldn't care less, but if it is, then we move into a situation where we go to additional meetings that'll discuss this further, correct?
That's gonna happen anyway. That's what's been discussed and then approved and kinda going forward.
Yeah. I was just wondering what's next?
Well, what's next, I believe staff indicated that we're waiting on a informal, um, but, um, plan based on the budget that was given to the Parks Foundation that was gonna go back to a contractor.
Our current budget is around three-hundred thousand, is that correct?
That's what had been earmarked or suggested.
And that is from your builder?
That's, that's a number that we said that we would support.
Okay, so in other words, your builder has to adjust his building according to your, your amount of money. Okay, next thing is, what about the city itself? Of the three-hundred thousand, what portion of that money are they gonna take in?
Would, uh, I don't understand the question.
Okay, we have a budget of three-hundred thousand.
Two-twenty.
Two-twenty. No, no, I know what they're putting in. My question is, how much are they gonna cost for administrative costs to do this three-hundred-thousand-dollar project?
They being the city, how much the city staff's time's gonna take?
Yes, your administrative costs, what are they gonna be?
I have no idea. I couldn't answer that right now.
Well, I think it's important to know. I'd like to know because I'd like that money not to be used up in that. I'd like it to go to the, uh, deal because if I'm correct, I think it's like ten to fifteen percent normally what it costs to do these projects. Is that correct? In that ballpark?
It'd be unfair of me to say that. I'm not absolutely sure.
Well, based on history, most of our projects are ten to fifteen percent. How's that?
It just, it just, it just depends. It's, it's more like a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Well, let's assume it's at ten percent. Ten percent puts us three.
Thirty grand.
Thirty grand out of it. So now we're down to thirty grand off of that. That's two-seventy. Does that affect us on the other side?
We don't have to charge it.
Bingo. But we need to make that clear here now.
Well, that's. That's not today's problem, I'm on the agenda right now.
I, I agree that that needs to be clarified, but this is, we have eleven years of experience I I agree that that needs to be clarified, but this is, we have 11 years of experience with the community. And donating to the to the skate park.
Okay.
All right. So now the decision is, do we continue to let the Park Foundation fund it on their own? Or is it such a project that the city believes in it enough to say, look, we're gonna dedicate some money to it? And if we are gonna build it as a city project? And if we build it as a city project, we're gonna get 80 grand plus from the Park Foundation that they had that he had.
No, I get all that.
Right?
I get all that.
So it's so right now, to me, all it is is whether we're gonna do this survey or not. And if we don't do the survey, and if we elect not to do the survey, it's not impacting at all. The ongoing conversation between the Parks Foundation and the city to figure out if it's even feasible to build the kind of project we want for the kind of budget that we're talking about.
Very good. Okay, so are we ready for the vote now? We have a motion.
But then we.
Go ahead.
But then we don't go with have with MOU in the meantime, cause current everybody else is right. Nobody has any idea how much it's gonna cost for sure. What if it is over 300,000?
We have a budget.
Yes, but Mayor Protam's.
Wait.
Bill O'Jarrow had mentioned that and that MOU, it doesn't necessarily mean we might need to pull monies out of the general fund, but of other funds. And that's something that I think, and you're right, there are you with the survey. That's one of the things that the the public needs to know, this kind of stuff. Are they okay with that?
That's not.
Cause I'm not.
If I may, if I may, Mr. Mayor, we've got a motion in a second for the motion. It cuts off discussion.
All right, sounds good. We have a motion and and we have a second. All those in favor of not put the survey out, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
I'm not screaming, but okay, that's good. All right, so good enough. We've done our due diligence. We had some opposition. We discussed it like gentlemen and I don't know hard feelings for me either way. But I think I owe it to those who commented with me on the phone and on the street to do something to look into it. I did my due diligence. We'll move forward. All right. The next thing on the agenda, let's move ahead. There we go. Let's see here. Where are we? Uh, number seven? Number seven, okay. Authorized interim city manager to execute professional service agreements in the amount to not to exceed, is that 1 million?
It is.
Okay, 1,197,146. I didn't know where it's gonna start or stop it. Didn't have zeros in there for me. With Blackwater Consulting Engineering for professional engineering consultant services for the city's wastewater treatment plant upgrade project staff.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
In May 2021, the city solicited proposals for professional engineering consultant services on the city's wastewater treatment plant upgrade project. The proposed Escalon wastewater treatment plant water quality project includes improvements to restore lost treatment capacity. Achieve consistent removal of VOD and TSS, address existing plant deficiencies and replace old facilities at the end of their useful life. Improvements to restore lost capacity would also modify the treatment process to produce recycled water to comply with state direction. The primary objectives of the project included the following. A, restore capacity to 3.0 MGD, which is combined industrial domestic with a future capacity of 3.5 MGD. B, effectively nitrify, denitrify the wastewater in winter domestic processing. C, have low construction costs. D, have low ongoing operation and maintenance costs. E, allow for ease of operations. F, produce and supply Title 22 recycled water to nearby non-potable water users. G, incorporate the use of solar power. The city received two proposals, one from Blackwater Consulting Engineers and one from Pace Advanced Water Engineering. The city reviewed each of these submittals and conducted interviews with each firm where necessary criteria related to the recycled water treatment and distribution, converting treatment systems, advanced treatment systems, et cetera, were discussed and evaluated. The city also evaluated each firm's understanding of the future project, including the project goals and critical elements of the project. Upon completion of the interviews, the city chose the proposal prepared by Blackwater Consulting Engineers. The total cost for the scope of work for this project was proposed at the 1,197,000. Oh, that is a typo. It's supposed to be 146 dollars. I apologize for that. Blackwater Consulting Engineers is also a local firm from Modesto who is assisting the city as well with the well number one A project. The fiscal impact at the October 18th, 2021 meeting, the city council unanimously approved the allocation of 1,450,000 dollars of the city's American Rescue Plan Act, otherwise known as ARPA funds towards wastewater sustainability, which includes the wastewater treatment plant upgrade engineering plans and the associated rate study. In addition, the approved fiscal year 2021, 2022 capital improvements plan included this project. The improvements from this project will provide future appropriate wastewater plant upgrades and operations for the long-term viability of the sewer service service to the community. We have attached a copy of the draft professional services agreement. And we do have two representatives from Blackwater Consulting in the audience. If you have any detailed technical questions that I probably will not be able to understand.
I have some questions. So first of all, um, I my question is, what's what's going on with well 1A where Blackwater is is doing that? What's the status of that project?
So we just received our paperwork and and you can add to anything I say too as well. This is Asia, by the way.
What's his name, please?
Asia.
Okay.
And we just received information from the state in the last few weeks. They've turned over the paperwork for us to go over for the SRF loan. Um, and we have to review those with legal counsel and get them reviewed by counsel and approved by resolution by by December 7th. And so once we execute that information, we'll be able to pull the loan that will fund the well 1A project.
So the well 1A has, how long ago was that contract given to Blackwater?
Been a little while.
We had to wait on the paperwork for the loan, so probably 18 months or so. Has it been that long?
We submitted the construction application. It's been about, it's been at least 18 months.
Yeah.
So 18 months when we.
Submitted to the state. We had to apply for the the state revolving loan or fund loan.
Okay.
Um, and it's a process. You have to put together a huge package with all this information. One of the other things we had to do or uh was just apply all that information to prove to the state that we're gonna be able to pay off this loan. And so we got all that information together submitted and probably due to COVID as well, it took this amount of time to be able to get a response back from the state that they were ready to move forward on.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next question for the wastewater treatment plant. Was this an RFP that we sent out to the open and we got Blackwater and we got Pace?
Correct.
We only got two back?
We only received two.
And we went with Blackwater because why?
Because the the city conducted interviews, um, which can.
Who who's the city?
The city would be city staff, so it was our former city manager, our public work superintendent and our wastewater operations, um, chief operator, Tom McCoy, which is quality control. Um, and they interviewed both of the candidates, reviewed the RFP with them, reviewed their submittals. Um, and it was determined that Blackwater was the better option for the city and their whole future project.
What was Pace's quote?
Uh, Pace's quote was a little bit more than this one. I wanna say maybe 200,000.
There's a little more.
A little more.
Okay. Now, another question. What was that work that Pace did where they gave us different options for our wastewater treatment plant? In my mind, that was a wastewater treatment plant study and they gave us different options on how to upgrade it. What what happened with that? What was that?
So it is my understanding that in the beginning, we were working with Pace and they put together a document to move forward on our wastewater treatment plant. They did a study for us, um, which was separate than this item. And they put together all of the potential options that the city would have to be able to move forward um, on the wastewater treatment plant. And I believe there were about six, five or six different options. Um, and at that time, the industries had asked for more time, additional time to reevaluate their stuff, figure out what they wanted to do.
The industries meaning?
The industries meaning like Eckert, Heinz.
Eckert and Kraft.
Yes.
Those two.
Those two, correct. Um, and in the meanwhile, we had moved forward with NG. Um, and NG had proposed for a wastewater treatment plant a project and so.
Hold on, wait, wait, wait. So Pace did all this work and then we moved forward with NG?
Uh, they were going to work together, Pace and NG worked together uh, on the item and then and then Pace, it's my understanding that Pace or excuse me, that the um NG put together a similar document. And when they completed it, it was way, way over budget, not something that the city would have gone for at all.
That's fair enough.
And so in lieu of that, we put it out for a request for proposals to to see if there was a better price we could get and a better project that could move forward that was within the city's financial capability as well as
Right.
approval to move forward on.
So Pace got us those, that, how much did that cost us, that study?
That study, if I recall correctly, it was 75,000.
75.
And it was split 60, 40 between the industries and us.
So the industry's paid some and.
I believe they paid their portion, which I believe is 60%.
We had that study done and completed. We have that at this point?
Correct, we do.
With the different options?
And that was in 2019.
Okay.
What's the shelf life?
Um, I'm not sure. It was a study. I'm sure it would be good for five years. That's usually how good things are. Things have changed in our plant since then.
We'll react before it expires, the shelf life.
So the, what's before us tonight is a uh a proposal to award Blackwater Engineering, who I I know is a local firm there off of, you know, down in in Modesto. And what is this 1.2 million dollars going to do exactly?
It's it's covering the design of the project.
Okay. So the 75,000 that we got from Pace was not any design. It was just a study.
A study for us to know about options that we could do to to modernize and improve our plan.
Okay.
Address the major factors that were affecting it.
And this 1.2 million dollars from Blackwater will get us actual engineered design? This is not, to be clear, this is not upgrading the facility at all. This is simply planning an upgrade.
We call it an upgrade because it will be an upgrade to our plant, but the but the probably the better term would be modernization.
Well, wait, I'm confused. Is it the plans or is it actual, they go out there?
It's the design, the plans that would be drafted.
There is no physical activity.
That's what I'm asking.
What he's getting at, he wants to know if they're gonna do the work or is this gonna be the picture, the plan for the work?
Engineering.
It is.
So this is 1.2 million dollars for engineering plans of our plant.
There you go.
And our previous city manager had had warned it a couple of meetings ago that that's how much it was gonna cost in order to design. She had she had said it a while back and that's why the the city staff also moved forward with utilizing our R funds for it.
Yeah.
Because it's going to be so expensive to do.
I guess my question is, you're gonna engineer what? We had six options with Pace when they did their option. We haven't discussed increase in capacity, what we're doing. How are we to know what we're getting into for a project for spending 1.2 million dollars if that's not the direction we wanted to go? Are we gonna get options from this? I mean, if you're going through engineering and putting this much effort into it, you pretty much locked us into whatever you decide we need to do without input from this council.
Well, no, this, if you read this, it says what they're gonna do. It tells us basically, these are the areas they're gonna address and those areas.
And there's multiple ways to get there, though, is my point.
And that's correct, but they're engineers and we're not. So what they're gonna do for us is try to explain to us the best way to achieve these goals we're trying now.
We have emphasized, we emphasized to both parties during the RFP process that this is a small city. We don't wanna pay for anything that we, one, can't afford, two, is gonna be an significant impact to the uh to the rates, et cetera. So these are the items that that staff and discussions with multiple consultants that we've dealt with over the years regarding and as well as quality control who operates our plant are the most important items that should be addressed in the modernization to get the full impact.
Was there ever a point in any discussion with either the consultants in the ballpark what this might cost us other than the initial fees we're paying currently for the engineering? Is there any ballpark at all?
To to upgrade the facility?
Let me, let me hang on a second. Is there any ballpark at all in terms of what it might cost once they're done engineering it?
Yeah, that, we got that from Pace.
That was their view. I wanna know what theirs is.
I'm not sure about that. I would have to, I would have to find out.
I got another question.
Look that up and get and get back to you and I can tell.
Okay, so the one, the 1.2 million dollars is, um, you know, on its face value is concerning for, you know, engineering plans, honestly, to me. And even if that is a good price, but we're paying for it with ARP funds. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, so we got those from the state, right? Where their magical money printing machine, right?
Yes.
Okay. And so this isn't coming out of our general fund or any other fund at all. This is money gifted to us specifically for projects like this. Is that correct?
Correct. And those ARPA funds were specific to types of projects and they they needed to be spent on water, wastewater. And what was that other item?
And broadband.
Broadband.
Okay, so the, and the ARP funds were 1.4 million, I believe, right?
That was how much we had dedicated to this specific water.
Okay, and let me just say this. Um, I know that over the last couple of years, we've done a lot of work with Pace. They've been in here a lot and he has been in here a lot. He's done multiple presentations. He's been out to the treatment plant. He's he's put a lot of work in. I know he's still working and we're still working with Pace on the surface water connection. But I think that, you know, the the last time we saw Blackwater i- in my mind was, I I think in 2018 or 19, when we approved well 1A. But other than that, you know, we haven't had a lot of interaction with them. And so I know from my perspective, I wasn't on the committee that, uh, you know, approved. It was it was it was Tom, it was the the plant operator, it was it was the previous city manager, it was Justin. But I kind of feel like Pace has has put in a lot of work for this town and they've already submitted plans that and they've done work already on the wastewater treatment plant. We've paid them 75,000 dollars and in my mind, we're essentially throwing that completely away because we're gonna get new engineering fees. And I I don't really like the direction that we're going on this. I think that we need more review on this at this point. As much as I wanna upgrade, nobody wants to upgrade the wastewater treatment plant more than me because I see it as the the linchpin for the future of this community, being able to achieve practical growth uh, in both residential and domestic sectors. I am not comfortable with this and I think I would like to review this more before awarding this this contract to Blackwater. How long do we have the ARP funds for?
The ARP funds actually go for several years.
Okay.
But until this work is done, you can't apply for other funds that are coming down to help pay for the project itself. So this has to, this has to happen, the design has to happen in advance of being able to apply for some.
Well, that makes sense. But the question is, do, if we have a few years to get these design plans going and use this initial ARP funding, we have time then to get the other funding, is that correct?
No, the other funding will be gone within a matter of years. So the the federal government put a great deal of money towards several projects, some of them being infrastructure, specifically water, wastewater, broadband. And those funding streams will come through separate and apart from the local funds. They'll be applied for.
Okay.
And once those monies are gone, they're gone.
I get it. I understand. But regardless, whether or not they're passed through or we can apply for them at a later date, there's no guarantee that we would get them. Right now, we have the 1.4 ARP funds for projects like this and I understand what we've done. And I do wanna move forward, however, I'm not, I'm not comfortable at this point uh, awarding this contract to Blackwater for these services. I don't, I don't know what the 1.2 million honestly is gonna do for us. I I feel like there's better deals out there. It's just my feel. Maybe I'm wrong. We got Pace and we got Blackwater. Pace has done a lot of work for us and we've gone with Blackwater. And I know that we're already working with Pace for other things. So I I'm just saying, for me personally up here, I am not comfortable with moving forward with this.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Cremage. Is there anyone else who'd like to elaborate?
Well, just, I'm just saying, I mean, I, you know, both companies, I know the city of Escalon has been working with for a long time and and both have had good results. I, looking at the primary objectives, I do remember the city, you know, the council up here talking about, you know, a lot of these things. And I think that this is probably the kind of thing that the staff has been able to glean out from all our going back and forth 50 different directions. And so good job on staff for that. I don't know what else we can do in terms of vetting between the two bids. I mean, the quote unquote better deal, uh, I think we're looking at the better deal um between the two, in my opinion.
I just have, the only thing that I'm concerned with, I I don't have a money problem with the necessarily the amount. I know it's covered by their funds, not coming out of the city, no problem there. I just have a concern that, are you bringing back one design, one engineered plan? And you're gonna drop it and go, it's gonna cost us 12 million dollars or whatever the number is. Is that what we're getting, we're getting one option? What are the parameters that you're working with to be able to provide the best reasonable cost solution for this community without blowing up the Cadillac plan when we need a couple of year old Chevy, if you will? So how does that work in your parameters of what you're working with?
So the first task of our scope is to out, is to validate the alternative 2B, which was in the wastewater master plan for the wastewater treatment plant. And so if you look at the breakdown of the tasks included in the RFP, there's a fee for each one. And we had discussions with staff after we were selected as the most qualified consultant. There were some tasks we identified that replied to recycle water. Based on the needs of the city right now, I'm not sure that's something you need to do. But that's part of the alternative 2B validation. So once we do that validation, that'll be discussed with city staff. We can probably bring it to council and see, I don't know what the process is there. But that's, that's what we're gonna look at. That one alternative that was selected in the wastewater master plan, our first scope of work is to validate that alternative for your needs.
2B?
Alternative 2B.
And and that, who came up with that? Was that Pace?
Yes.
So you you're gonna design a plan that was fit to a budget that Pace provided to us?
So no, the first, one of the scope items here was to validate that alternative. So the city, city essentially in the RFP said the first scope of work would be to look at that alternative and make sure that's the way you guys wanted to go.
Cause we had what, different options? We picked one and that's one you're gonna address.
Yeah, and that, that, yeah. That alternative was to produce recycle water. That alternative was to produce, um, recycle water.
We're gonna resell that to the south, in the irrigation district.
We, we have, we get the plans. How, how long would it take to get these plans?
Um, so I'd have to look at the schedule there, but I, it depends on how long it took to validate the alternative. So I think, I don't have the schedule in front of me, let me look at it.
That's an important question, right? We've got 1.2 million, when are we gonna get a product?
Yeah, and so that 2 million is, is for engineering services through design, bidding support and construction management as well, or engineering services during construction. So the RFP, um, we sort of re- removed the tasks around, it was planning, funding, design and engineering services during construction. So it was fully turnkey, all-inclusive services, planning through construction support. Um, so it was a very large scope. Um, so there, there are specific tasks for design related to recycle water that we were gonna look at a little harder be- before we moved forward with it. Um, and that was part of the alternative 2B validation.
All right.
Exhibit B to the contract, which I think staff's trying to put on the screen now, shows the schedule.
Looks like the design tasks would end somewhere around December of 2022.
There you go. All right, is there any other questions, gentlemen?
Well, I'm trying to think. I, I've got lots of questions. Um, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're, we're going with the right. So, my question is, when this, the, the, the city manager and the superintendent and the plant manager are the three people involved that made the decision to approve this proposal, right?
Correct.
How come that, this scope of a proposal, um, how come we don't see both of those, you know, at the city council level? How come we don't see all the proposals?
If you would like me to provide those to you, I mean, want me to, I can, we can continue this item to the next meeting and I can give you both the proposals. However, I would look to you as legal counsel to advise what, where we could go from there.
Well, I don't wanna be obtuse. The, the point is, council is very f- free to ask staff for documents that are coming up on an agenda. And I don't hope the council doesn't take this the wrong way. So the, the, in other words, these items could have been asked for beforehand. And it is up to the council. If the council wants to continue this, that's fine too. But my point being, these are items that could have been asked for and, and received and reviewed prior to tonight, so it wouldn't have to be continued if the council chooses to continue this item. I don't, I don't know how else to answer your question.
Well, I guess my concern is, I know it's pass-through money. It's not necessarily money that's coming out of our direct funds. Um, I do wanna make sure that we are going with, um, the, the right company and the right group of people to, to see this project too. Uh, I'm a little, um, concerned that we've approved Blackwater and it's taken 18 months and, and we don't even have a well built. It's been a year and a half, there's no digging going on, there's no new well. I know these things take time, but, you know, frankly, I'm, I'm sick and tired of hearing that. There's got to be a way to expedite these things. And if somebody's not putting in that time that we're paying money to and they're not going above and beyond to try to make projects happen, I don't know if I am comfortable with that.
So the well 1A project could not move forward because the, it's, it is funded through a loan. We had to get the state to approve us taking that loan before we could move forward because if we move forward on items before they fund us, they could potentially tell us they're not gonna reimburse us or pay for that. And so it would be at our risk to move forward on a project that we haven't received a, a loan for with the, with the back coming that, oh, you started without our permission cause it's our money that we're giving you. We're not gonna reimburse you for that.
You know what I'm else, I'm also uncomfortable with? And, uh, even as a fiscal conservative like myself, I, uh, even though this is pass-through money and we're getting this money from, like, like I said, some, some magical, uh, source up in the state, it is taxpayer money. And we're gonna spend 1.2 million dollars to get, uh, engineering plans for our wastewater treatment plant. And then we're gonna go out, as Claire said, and try to get more funds to upgrade the plant. And that could be 5, 10 million dollars. Um, I don't know why, but for some reason, it's just, it's just not sitting well with me tonight. Um, I wanna upgrade the plant, but damn, this is just a, I don't know. I, I didn't think it would, it would go like this. I thought we would fund it kind of internally, you know, with a bond or something where there's community buy-in and, and everybody sees what's going on. Um, but, I don't know. I, I'm, something's not sitting right with me, so I'm not in favor of approving this at this time.
Okay. Is there anyone else like anymore? Okay, I wanna thank you for indulging us.
Did you have anything else you wanted to add? I just wanna make sure if you had anything you wanted to say.
In time, people will understand more if they get more experience. And that's what we have to deal with, you know? Uh, been around this thing for a while, I get the, how this works. Some people are gonna learn that's the way it works because they're new and I, I appreciate that. But the questions are all good questions, and that's how they learn. I don't hope you didn't take it any way other than it's just a learning thing, okay? And I wanna thank you for your time again.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Okay, so where do we, where do we go with that now?
Public comment?
Public comment. Please, give us your name.
Once again, Kurt Danziger, and I agree with you 100%. Peter, you're right on the, on the button. Um, I'm a fiscal conservative myself, but I believe you said the, this pass-through money was 1 million for?
Yeah, 4.5.
Which we allocate.
We've, the council has earmarked that amount for this, um-
Okay, so more than enough money to hire PACE. More than enough money to hire PACE, who's designed the plant and really has the knowledge of what you need to do. Now, let's go back to the lay portion of this, which is, I'm sure we all are in there. You look at the primary objectives of the project, including the following. Have low construction costs. How much does it cost to have low construction cost? Allow for ease of operations. What is that? I, I don't know. Uh, so incorporate the use of solar power that's already there, put in there by NG. I don't know what really is gonna go on here. And, and if, I think we need to stick with PACE because they designed this thing, it was acceptable, they showed how we fund this through the canneries and, and rate increases, uh, to the canneries. Which, by the way, haven't got rate increases when you, when you go put everybody else's sewer rates on, uh, the chopping block up here. I want you to review what the canneries are paying. And when's the last time they got a rate increase? Um, one of the biggest issues, I remember when we attended the meeting with PACE out at the treatment plant, was it was gonna be absolutely important to line those pits, two of them.
Line the what, please?
The, the treatment plant.
Oh, the pits, okay, got it.
Yeah, yeah, they were gonna be lined because we were having intrusions and leakages and what have you. And that was part of our cease and desist order. And I don't see that being into the design phase of this. And I think, I think we really need to look at some of those things.
Is that part of the design scope for them to look at the plant here? I don't know. Is that, is that part of it, staff? Excuse me, staff? Is that part of the scope for this, uh, contract for them to review the Heinz crab plant?
I'm not absolutely sure, Asia. Do you recall if you're reviewing the plant?
Should we do the industrial?
Correct.
No.
Well, there's your answer to your question.
Well, that's what they're doing, but what about the rates? You were doing a rate study for them as well, correct? Not just residential?
Be hiring.
We're doing that? Okay, sorry.
I know the council will ask.
I was gonna go to my next questions for Councilman Bellinger. You'd asked several months ago when, uh, the city manager, Alcantor, was here, uh, to get you a list of all the fees and taxes paid by the canneries and what do they contribute to the general fund. Did you ever get that?
No, and I was gonna, with this on the agenda, that was my question later to request.
Well, I'd ask that question too.
I have not gotten it yet, but that is-
She was gonna supply that before her last meeting.
Yes.
But we don't know that. And, and that leads to the cost of the project. Um, when PACE came in and did their study, it was $72,000. I said, well, how much is the, uh, canneries paying? And it was gonna be 60, 40, city, canneries, of, wait a minute, they're getting the best benefit out of this. So then it went 40, 60. Is that what's gonna happen with this, this money here? Is it, canneries are gonna pay 60%?
Staff?
Good question.
This money is coming from the federal government. There is not a split. When the rate study is done, which is a different item than is before you tonight, then that can be part of that discussion.
There you go. All right.
Well, we could use, the money's coming to the city, not to the canneries. So the city can decide what they wanna charge the canneries for that. And then we'd have extra money that we can put into whatever we design and put into the treatment plant. So, there's just a, a cost there.
Kurt, for your information, a couple of years ago, myself and Tammy sat in meetings with the canary and we negotiated some changes that needed to be changed. There were some discrepancies in what they owed us. And we worked out the differences and it wasn't easy. Tammy did a, a really good job. She took a beating, but she came through and got it done. And it was not a pretty picture at all. They're not easy to get money out of. Uh, they argued that the time had passed and that they didn't notice anything. And Tammy got it. She did a good job. And she did increase, if I remember, the fees too. So, I don't think we're gonna have a problem with that. I think they pretty much understand now cause after that little, uh, dance we had with them, there was some ground rules set in place and I think they understand where, where everybody's at now.
Excellent. Um, the other thing, and this is a little bit off the subject, but it's on, it's on the canneries. Um, when you look at their permit, and I've got a copy of it and I reviewed it, and I reviewed the city's permit, they don't jive. We are not enforcing our permit with the canneries. They're fouling our percolation ponds. They caused us the most amount of money damage, uh, to the treatment plant. If you didn't have the canneries, I don't think we'd even be talking about upgrading or doing these, anything, maybe lining the pits. But, uh, they do a lot of damage with what they send through. They don't pre-treat well. Um, they're all constantly in violation, but we don't enforce that.
I don't know truly where we're at with that. And then staff, uh, my, my question, I guess, would be, who is in charge of making sure that they continue doing what the city requires?
If, if I may, Mayor?
Sure, go ahead.
We're way off topic here. Right now, we're in public comment. So the public comment should go one way, and then the public comment should end. We're not in a public hearing where there's usually the back and forth.
All right.
And it's, on top of that, it's off the topic. That's before the city council right now.
Good enough.
Then I, then I would just say, with the amount of money that we're gonna pay on that, that should be included in their report on how to, uh, tell the city on how to enforce that permit.
There you go. Thank you. All right, anyone else out there like to come up and speak? Um, anyone online, on the phones, would like to add to this conversation? Um, one question, Asia, if I may. Um, so this study you're doing is gonna encompass what actual work needs to be done based on the scope that the city's provided you. It doesn't have anything to do with, uh, schedule, excuse me, uh, rates or any of that stuff at all.
Correct.
That'll be determined by the city based on the impact, financial impact on us.
Yeah, so once we determine a recommended project, we'll give you cost estimates along the way.
And that'll help us evaluate what we need to recoup in order to stay above water.
Yeah, and then we would, we would work with providing information for whoever you hired as a consultant for your rate study evaluation and provide long-term operating costs.
Perfect.
Capital costs.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. All right, no other questions?
No, I've got a question directed to staff. I'm just wondering, uh, the primary objectives of the project. Both companies, that goes for both companies, right? Not just Blackwater, but both companies had to be evaluated by staff based on these primary objectives, right?
Correct.
And both companies, um, you know, the, the, received two proposals. Um, what would you say, you know, I know you interviewed them, you discussed with them how familiar with they were the plant, all that good stuff. Um, and then, at the end, you're recommending, uh, Blackwater. Can you say, give me one or two reasons why you feel that Blackwater, you know, is the preferred option in this situation over PACE?
So, I wasn't a part of that process, and so I'm going off of the documentation that was left.
Understood.
Uh, moving forward. And it's, it's my understanding during those interview processes that Blackwater scored higher with each of the city staff than PACE did with, with each of the city staff.
Yep. Okay.
And they also came in lower in costs. So, it's not a requirement, but of, but of course, the city, if you can find somebody that provides a responsible lower bid as well as scores higher than the, the other people, you would typically go with the lowest cost as long as it's responsible.
Here's, here's, here's the thing with that. So, we've been working with PACE for a long time. We've already, we're working with them on the wastewater, uh, excuse me, on the connection, the, the surface water. And you're saying that they don't score high enough with the staff? Is that what you said?
So each of these firms during their interviews were, were evaluated.
Personally.
There were three, there were three, the three staff that sat in on the interviews. And they each evaluated them on the criteria listed here.
Okay.
And, and Blackwater scored higher
Right.
with all three candidate, or with all three interviewers than PACE did.
I understand that. Um, I have a hard time understanding that just because I know PACE has had so many interviews and been so present and been out to the wastewater treatment plant multiple times. Um, another thing, we're using this money, it's pass-through money. Maybe when I'm older and wiser and have more experience, I will be okay with spending other people's money, uh, more easily. But at this point, we have enough money from ARP to, uh, fund probably PACE's study too. I, I want to reevaluate this. I, I think we have a new interim city manager. I think we need to go back through the process of looking at these proposals. Um, I think that I want to see the proposals at the city council. This is a lot of money. And, um, I am not comfortable with approving this tonight. Not at all.
Do you have a comment, um, from our superintendent? Go ahead, Justin.
Hello, council. I've just been listening to everybody's comments tonight. I just want everybody to know that I've been here for 15 years and the treatment plan has been with me for 15 years. Um, I understand completely all the work that Andy and PACE has done, which has been tremendous for us. Um, they've done a lot of the inside, we've been able to see a plant. But we've also been doing the same thing with Blackwater. Blackwater has similar-sized cities, um, that they've worked with. Um, I believe Sonora is one of them, uh, Jamestown area. They have just more of a feel of what our small town needs and wants. Um, I'm stressed on them very, very much on not going too big that we need. We also need to plan for the future, but we have immediate issues that we need to take care of now. Um, lining the ponds is one of them, and Blackwater has been in discussions with that definitely. But I just hope that the council will trust the staff that was in there that made those decisions, um, that more than willing to do whatever you guys want. But both are very good companies, but we were in favor of Blackwater. Um, and if you look at both proposals on how we scored, you would see why.
And I, thank you, Justin. Uh, just a one comment to that, that Kurt brought up, which was great, that, uh, PACE, Andy with PACE had been very vocal about the impact that the industry has on our wastewater treatment plant. And I don't, uh, so we know that Andy, um, and PACE are aware of that and that impact on us um, and our, and our town. Um, I haven't seen that, and Blackwater has said tonight that that is not part of their study, is to evaluate that. I think that we could get more bang for the buck, um, with going with PACE on this project. So, that's, I mean, I'm pretty clear on that. So, I appreciate Justin saying that. I'm sure both companies are great, but that's my opinion.
Okay, Councilman Bellinger?
Just, just for my sake to where I stand, we paid PACE to provide services two years ago.
Yeah.
We have no obligation. They provided what we asked for and what we paid for. There's no obligation at this point because they did that work. They were paid and compensated for it. Right now, our city staff, who has more knowledge than anybody on this council about how that wastewater treatment facility works, did an evaluation. I'm in favor of going with their qualified opinion on who is the best to serve this community. So, I don't feel an obligation because someone did a study that was paid for that they automatically get an extra leg up in a vote in any way, shape or form.
Okay, so, at this point, what we're looking for, this group to what, vote on this?
Looking for you to authorize the city manager to enter.
I will accept a motion in favor of staff's recommendation. Do we have such a vote?
Yeah, I moved authorize interim city manager to execute a professional services agreement in the amount not to exceed $1,197,146 with Blackwater consulting engineers for professional engineering consult, consultant services for the city wastewater treatment plant upgrades.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
We have four to one. Thank you. And thank you for coming this evening. And we're going to move on to staff communications. We'll start with Councilman Crummich.
Thank you, Mary Elves. So we did some work on the trees on McHenry, where they were pushing up the sidewalks and the roots. As I stated before, that is happening all over town. It's not something that we can simply just wait for, you know, the next person to make a big stink about it. That's something we should be proactive on. I know there's a number of trees along the, along the high school on Escalon Avenue there that are pushing up the sidewalks. There's already a cone blocking one where it's pushing up the pavers. And it's hard for people. I know there's a number of individuals that drive their wheelchairs, automated wheelchairs down there, and they can't get over it. This is not something that we can just wait on. The trees continue to grow, the roots continue to push up, and the sidewalks continue to get worse and worse. So I would like the staff, and if the city council, you know, agrees, we should continue. It's going to be an ongoing thing. We should continue to take these trees out and redo the sidewalks the way we did on McHenry. Has anybody got any agreeance on that?
It's not for some, we can't discuss it right now. This is...
Well, I would like to put it on an agenda item to discuss. I would need a second.
Well, you at least you mean a consensus, just to say we should pursue it?
Yeah.
I mean, I think we should all keep pursuing this. I mean, they're not going to get any better on their own.
Right.
Well, we have his motion, and we have a second for that. We'll go on the...
There's no motion. There's no motion during council discussion.
Just need two people to put...
To have it put, that's a consensus, to have it discussed further. Or you can just have a consensus for staff to maybe...
Look at some areas in town.
And bring you the council recommendation as to how to address this budget item.
I mean, it may seem like a small thing, but I think it's a big thing. And so I would like the staff to look at that, maybe identify some areas where some trees need to be cut down and the sidewalks need to be repaired.
I think that's ongoing, is it not? Ask Justin, he'll know.
So we typically do sidewalk improvements. We do a, well, no. We do sidewalk improvements, new sidewalks when we do projects, when we do reconstructions of streets. We don't typically install sidewalk in areas. If we get monies to address things with projects, and it's usually all grant funding. And so you've seen, we've put stuff towards slurry seals. For the most part, unless council instructs the staff otherwise, sidewalks are the property owner's responsibility for both liability and maintenance.
How did we address the issue on McHenry?
Remember Ann Shaddix came?
And the council decided on that item that they wanted city, they wanted the city to fund that replacement, and that's how that happened.
Very good. Okay, so if I understand, Councilman Crummich, is he would just like someone to look into it and then identify these issues and bring it back to us for discussion?
Provide you an update at the next meeting.
All right, thank you very much.
Specifically, the trees next to the high school. I know they're pushing up the sidewalk. Thank you. Another comment, a lot of good discussion tonight. I would just, you know, we hashed out a bunch, but the lady that spoke, Donnell Hagan, about the COVID vaccine mandates, I fully support what she is doing and people's right to choose, what they put in their bodies. And I support that in, as a city council member and a local government, to reject the state enforcing mandates on people that they don't agree with. So I'd just like to say that. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go to Councilman Swift.
Okay, yeah, just a couple of things real quick. Yeah, again, don't ever, yeah, a lot of lively debate tonight. Don't ever say that we're a rubber stamp council because, and we're always on the same page and lockstep because, as you know, we're not. But at least we can still get things done, okay? So that's a good thing. If anybody had, it's semi-grid locky, not really, not really, gridlock light. But anyway, boy, I don't know if you had a chance to come out last night. Halloween was another great little event in Escalon this year. And the reason I'm bringing it up is because I was talking to somebody from Modesto today, and they said, you know what? It was sort of weird because it was really muted in Modesto where they were at, you know? Who knows? But it wasn't muted here, and I think everybody had a, went out, had a great time. And forgot to mention this, probably something, you know, ideally maybe for Justin. On Highway 120, I forgot, I was going to mention this for a while, on the westbound lane, right next to, I'd say Johnny Galloway's old place, there's a rather scary bump in the road. And I remember I was across the street one time, and every time you hear boom, 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 you look forward, sure know they hit that bump. But I totally forgot about it until I went there myself, drove there myself today in the westbound lane, and then knocked my trailer ramp off. And I go, oh, I got to mention that to somebody.
That's a state road.
So that is a state road, so I don't know what can be done about that one. But man, that's a pretty nasty one, so, anyway. So the parade is 10:30, okay? Then council members should be there. What do you think about 9:45? 9:45, next Thursday. No candy, right? What do you? We can do whatever we want. Okay, all right. Good, that communication is done too, and that's it.
Councilman Bellinger.
Just real quick, for the lunch for the veterans, can you get tickets at the door for those that may not make it? Will there be tickets available for folks at the door?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make that clear. You don't have to have a ticket before you get there.
And we do have takeout.
And we have takeout. Everybody, it's good food every year. Don't miss out. Secondarily, I think you caught that in our discussion, looking for that data from ratepayers on sewer, whether it be domestic or industrial. I think there's a list of stuff that we had previously mentioned as far as capacities and how much is used by the industrial side, specifically each plant. Keeping in mind that we always, as discussed before, make sure that if one of those said properties and buildings or businesses decided to leave our fine city and we're left holding the bag, what is that bag we're left with, if you will? To make sure our ratepayers don't get slaughtered by that potential outcome. And I think that's probably enough for the evening for me.
Very good. Pro-Tim, the juror.
I agree, really good discussion tonight. It's, you know, we may disagree on things, but we all take our fiduciary obligation to this community very strongly. And we're elected with trust instilled in us to do the right thing. We may disagree with what the community wants at times or what the direction is that they might want us to have. But I think the discussion is always good to have and get all the different viewpoints out there on the table so that we can have a full discussion. And that's the basis of the public hearings, and I'm sure there will be a public hearings coming up in the future to discuss a number of these issues. And that will be another opportunity for the community to weigh in. So I appreciate the dialogue and everyone's position on the council trying to move forward. Thanks.
Thank you. I would agree with Councilman, I mean, Pro-Tim, Councilmember, juror. Yeah, these debates, discussions are healthy. It gives a wide spectrum of concepts and ideas that represents the whole community, not just a fraction of it. And it also shows the community that we have different thought process. We're not a bunch of drones that just hanging out together. The next thing I want to bring up is I read an article in the paper the other day, I think it was yesterday, about LA. They are opposing, the city council of Los Angeles is opposing the bill, what is it, S9?
SB9.
SB9, yeah. There is 100% consensus on that council that they're opposing it. And I don't disagree with them. The fact that the state of California has removed us from the equation in terms of how we have our communities designed is wrong. And I would be very interested in having something in writing to submit to the governor from this council to express that disgust. Because I am disgusted with it. The fact that they can come here at will, tear down a house and throw four units next to somebody's nice home is wrong. It's just flat out wrong. And so, gentlemen, is there consensus? I'd like some, would you feedback one at it? And we can get something written up and sent? On behalf of this group?
I concur.
Is there any opposition? Okay, if there's no opposition, I'd like to put a letter together and submit it to them.
Put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Very good. All right, that's one item. Now, the next one's a DOJ item. I got a letter or a phone call from the Cali Group, which is a group in California, elected officials. And they want us to endorse the, was it the First Amendment? It was the First Amendment. And it's the same type of deal. It's a note, sending it off to the governor. And, oh, actually, not the governor, it's the federal government, isn't it?
Attorney General.
Attorney General. In opposition to their strong-handying those who oppose the vaccines at these board meetings, at the school board meetings. And I personally would agree with that. I don't know how the rest of the council feels. But if I have the consent of the council, that's another one we want to put out.
Grading, the grading.
All the way across? We're good. That's the second one. I think it's time we start sending some feedback because I don't think the government understands what they're doing to us. It's not something we're condoning, and we don't want part of that. All right, that's done. Okay, now, I read another article in the paper. It's something to do about Escalon Housing. And it says in this article that they're building these homes in Escalon. Do we know anything about that at all? I lost the dang paper because I wrote the name down and I can't remember what it was.
Is this the city of the Escalon Times?
No, it was an article in the, I was on the computer, and I came across this article about senior housing. And it says, "In Escalon, we're building these custom homes, the floor plans, blah, blah, blah." Do we know anything about that?
The only project that I know is in the process of moving forward and doing their environmental is that senior housing project that the county is doing.
From Stockton.
From Stockton.
That's where, they were from Stockton. It was called Eskas something. It was ESK something.
But it was apartment housing. It wasn't houses. And so I don't know what that are.
I'm going to look it up again, try to find it.
And it's possible that they might be doing a housing development in Escalon vicinity, not necessarily in the city.
I'll look it up again, but it looked to me like they were selling.
Escaton?
Escaton. Are you familiar?
I saw that.
What is that? Would you look it up? Escaton.